Today marks the start of our annual budget process. I'm sure that the staff is ready. I hope we'll be ready when the staff gives us the information and asks the questions that we have to have and undertake to set a path forward for this organization, this community, and the work that needs to be done to be sure that we serve and work on our priorities, but also that we pay attention to every member and resident of the city and our budget process. So I'm excited to kick off a budget workshop for 2024. So why don't we begin with introductions of the council members here? And if you have a role in the committee, the Intergovernmental Budget Committee, please make sure that that's...
(laughing) I'm sorry.
I'm trying here.
I'm trying to bring some excitement.
Yeah, I know. Oh, you're not excited about a budget? You don't have to bring that. I got that over here overload. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and start with our city clerk, and we'll go around and have introductions.
Billy Tons, Deputy City Clerk.
City Councilman James Mitchell, Large. I'm the Vice Chair of the Budget Intergovernment Relations.
Braxton Winston, Mayor Pro Tem.
Vi Lyles, Mayor.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Mail from Graham District, too.
Terry Bacardi, District Six.
Ryan Bergman, Budget Director.
Teresa Smith, CFO.
Patrick Baker, City Attorney.
We have several council members that are not able to join us today. Dimple Ashmir, who chairs the Budget and Governance and Effectiveness Committee, is not able to join us, as well as Councilmember Victoria Watlington, Renee Johnson, and Luana Mayfield. So we'll start this workshop. I know that Mr. Driggs is somewhere in the building, so we'll expect to see him momentarily. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, and unless there are some words that you'd like to start or give us a preface from, from the committee. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. All right, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. This is, again, our first budget workshop, and hopefully Ryan and the team set the stage at the Annual Strategy Meeting last month. And one of the things I just want to put out there is that what we try to do each year, and it's not just for the upcoming fiscal year, but the next fiscal year also, is to have a structurally balanced budget. So in other words, ongoing revenue matches ongoing expenditures. So for the FY '23 budget, clearly we did that, but even during the FY '23 budget process, we looked into FY '24 to make sure without salaries, that we were salary enhancements, that we were also being structurally balanced. At the Annual Strategy Meeting, it was revealed that the budget outlook provided FY '22 year-end with a slight surplus of about $13.4 million. But again, I prefaced the beginning by saying that we want to be structurally balanced, so those are one-time resources that we'll use in the upcoming budget for one-time expenditures. So again, starting off in a pretty good place for FY '24 in terms of the current revenue growth projections support existing services, but if that were how you would do a budget, we'd be done, and we're not done. It's only the beginning, because there's compensation increases, and there's things that are happening in the economy in terms of just cost increases, but also some enhancements to particular services that the different departments are discussing as we start. So that's really on the operating side of the budget. On the capital side of the budget, Ryan did mention at the Annual Strategy Meeting that our steady state had changed a bit. We were looking at $226 million each bond cycle. It would be reduced to $210 million each bond cycle, but the good news is that because there was unprogrammed capacity in each of those bond cycles, it helps absorb some of this additional cost that we're seeing in the economy. So that is almost a little bit of a look back from the Annual Strategy Meeting. Today, we're going to start not on the operating side, but on the capital side, okay? So, Mayor, if there aren't any questions or comments, I think I'm turning this over to our CFO.
So any questions or comments? All right, let's go.
And let me just add one thing, Mr. Manager. I know most of you have done this for a few years. We have a few people coming back, a few council members that are new. As a reminder, the way that we structure these is, please ask us all the questions, request all the information you'd like. If you forget to ask today, give me a call tomorrow. What we'll do is we'll produce a report of all the questions, all the things you wanted to look deeper into, and we will get that to you prior to the next budget workshop.
And several members of the council said that they would be watching today, so I've asked them to make sure that they get that, those questions in as well. All right? Who's going to be up? Teresa?
All right, again...
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith.
Teresa Smith, CFO. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this afternoon to kick off this first budget workshop. I also wanted to introduce Matt Hasted, who is the City Treasurer, who's here with me today, that can help respond to any questions you may have. All right, I wanted to start out today with why all of this planning process matters and to highlight some positives that come from this process. You know, we use the term "one Charlotte" to talk about how we apply our city services to residents, how the residents see us, how we work together in the departments and across departments as a team, but this also applies when we think about our credit and our debt program. So today, we're specifically talking about the general CIP program, but when the rating agencies look at management and governance, they are really looking at the government as a whole. So an impact to one credit entity could bleed over and impact another credit entity. That's why this planning and budget process that you guys do every year is so important. The city does receive high marks with the rating agencies for our planning process, and those marks allow us to maintain the AAA with three credit rating agencies. And that AAA provides investors with the notification that we are a high-quality debt with minimal risk. And so saving you from having to read all the three quotes around the edges, I just wanted to highlight some of the comments there, where the rating agencies talk about formal policies and long-term planning and conservative budgeting. They mentioned very strong management, updated capital planning that looks ahead for five years, and also the city's ability to manage our spending pressures associated with growth. So they see this process as very important, and I just wanted to give kudos to the council and the manager and all the staff that come together to make this planning process what it is, because it is very important. A couple of benefits of the AAA rating that I would like to highlight is that it does provide us access to the financial markets, particularly when those markets are difficult. So what that means is that when the city has a need to raise funds, we have that ability to raise funds. It also allows us to attract quality and multiple investors. So the AAA brings in people, and the more investors you have interested in your debt, the better off you are at getting a competitive interest rate in the end. So let's talk about what the steady state is. Debt is just one component of our comprehensive capital program. We utilize multiple funding sources like PEGO and grants and contributions, but today, when we're talking about capital affordability, we are specifically talking about debt. So the city uses a couple of different types of debt. We use our general obligation bonds, GO bonds, just to get the acronyms out there. We use those for housing and transportation and neighborhoods. Those are the things that require voter approval for us to be able to issue that debt. Our COPs, or Certificates of Participation, is what we utilize for our facilities, and those do not require voter approval. And then we also use a short-term program, which a lot of you have seen on council actions, which is our BANS, or Bond Anticipation Notes. And what that does is that allows us to only draw down funds as we're constructing projects, rather than fixing that cost out for the long term on the front end. So that has been a very successful program for us in the past. Debt affordability is a point-in-time analysis where we look out to ensure that the overall funding plan can cover our debt service over the life of that debt, and it also allows us to make sure that we are maintaining our financial policies. One of those policies is that we maintain our fund balance in the Municipal Debt Service Fund at a minimum of 50% of the following year's debt service. So we do that by utilizing our debt model, which we'll talk about in just a few slides. And in 2018, we came up with a process that we now refer to as the steady state, and what that process does is it allows us to preserve our affordability across multiple years. So when we, when we look at that debt model and we calculate an affordability, we're not using all of the affordability upfront at one time, but we're actually looking to see, how can we make sure that we're maintaining that across multiple years? Because we update this debt model regularly, we would expect that the steady state will change, whether that's in a positive way or a negative way. And as you've already heard, the spoiler alert this year, it is negative, because our affordability has gone down. A final point here is when we look at affordability, that can be allocated between bonds and COPs as you're looking at projects and how you spend that money. All right. As a reminder, what we're talking about is the Municipal Debt Service Fund. That fund has two major funding sources, which is a dedicated portion of the property tax, as well as a dedicated portion of the sales tax. So we're going to continue to go a little deeper and deeper with each slide into the model and how we, how we drill down into the affordability. So now specifically talking about the model, there are several inputs that go into this. Number one is our prior year results. So once the audit is complete, we make sure that those audited results are input into the model. We also make sure that we've input the current budget, so we're working with things that are already approved and the things that we know about. But then the three key drivers that we have are revenue assumptions, our spend rate assumptions, and our cost of funds or interest rate assumptions. And so we're going to talk a little deeper about those three. Starting with the revenue. This is a good point where I wanted to mention that when we're looking at assumptions, this is not sort of a do-it-yourself-with-no-help-fromothers kind of an exercise. We, we make sure that when we're looking at these assumptions, we are looking at historical trends. We utilize the city's economist. We're looking at revenue trends. We're working with general services when we're talking about projects and what that spend will look like. We utilize our financial advisor, and we also have a modeling consultant, and so we take input from multiple sources to make sure that our assumptions are in line with what's happening in the market, so that we can have a good comfort level for, for where we sit with those assumptions. On the revenue side, we like to have assumptions that are conservative but reasonable. So we want to be in that place where we can have an assumption that we outperform when the actuals come in, rather than being on the other side where we underperform and then we're having to course correct because of the underperformance. But we also want to be reasonable so that we're not leaving affordability on the table, so there is a balance in that revenue assumption. For fiscal year 2022, our actuals on the revenue side were very closely aligned with the budget. So from an impact to the model, it's represented here with a plus and a minus, because that was sort of a neutral impact in the model, not, not a great change either way on a positive or a negative side. And we're going to flip over to the opposite side of the equation, which is our spend rate and cost of funds. And I want to start on the cost of funds side, because I think that's one that everybody is familiar with. If you've paid any attention at all to interest rates in the market, you know that the Fed has been increasing rates for almost a year now. And while the, the rate that the city will have when we issue our debt is not directly tied to the federal funds rate, there is sort of a ripple effect that that has across the market, and so we have to plan that rates will be higher when the Fed rate is higher. So we have factored those assumptions into the model. The spend rate, talking about that a little bit, I, I think the best example that I could think of on this one, you all have probably seen on social media, these videos where people say, well, this is what I, these were the groceries that I could buy a year ago, and they, you know, have this dump out of all these groceries on the cabinet, and then they say, well, this is what I can buy now, and it's, you know, bananas and a loaf of bread and, you know, milk, and that's all, all they can have. It's sort of the same thing on the spend rate. So we know projects are going to cost more, so we are going to spend through the funds that we have faster. That has an impact in the model, because it means we will have to issue debt quicker than we had before. So on the GO side, on the voter approval, there is a statutory requirement that we spend those funds within seven years. And in years past, sometimes it has taken us seven years to spend those. We don't think that will be the case in this current environment. We think we will definitely spend through those funds faster, just because projects are going to cost more. So when we take a look at all three of these factors together, with the revenue being neutral, and the spend and the interest being the negative side, that is what leads us to our updated steady state, again, that you heard on the 30th, we'll make it official today. Here's the slide, previous capacity, 226, new capacity, 210. Housing bonds there have stayed at 50 in our model, and then the streets and neighborhoods being that difference of 160. And then I think Mr. Bergman will comment on the unprogrammed.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, the amount that's for housing and the amount that's for streets and neighborhoods hasn't been changed. That's what you will see in the out years of the CRP, CIP in the current budget. So I think last year at this time, when we were approving the bond that we did get approved by the voters this year, but also looking at the out years of our five-year CIP, it was becoming clearer and clearer that this inflationary environment was going to last a little bit. And so when we planned the out years of the CIP, we intentionally did not program all of the capacity that we had. So that's why, even though we did see a reduction from our steady state last year to where we are now, which remember is always a point in time, the amount that we programmed is not impacted at all. There's still a little bit of capacity, but what I would ask of council, naturally, you're going to look at capacity and you're going to want to think about how you can use it, but please let us get through some of our other presentations, because the reality is that we do have some cost pressures, inflationary pressures, on some existing projects, and that is going to be the best way for us to address some of them.
And with that, we'll turn it over for any questions that you have about steady state.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought it's worth commenting that looking at this steady state, the easiest way to understand that is if you borrow more than that in a given year, you're going to have to borrow less than that in a future year. So this is the number that you can do over and over again. If you get ahead of yourself and you borrow more, then you're going to pay for it later by borrowing less. I just found that's a useful way to kind of think of that. The rating agencies in the past had said that we had a relatively high debt level, but they still maintained our AAA because they appreciated the quality of our management. Is that still true?
That is absolutely still true.
We got quality management.
Yeah, yeah, we got quality management. Yeah. Hey, don't act so surprised. We do. The rating agencies appreciate our, our financial management. This is a slightly geeky question. I don't know if there's an easy answer. What is the duration of our debt obligations, the whole portfolio?
Do you know that answer for the entire portfolio?
Again, for the record, Matt Hasted, City Treasurer. I am not sure for, for the current outstanding debt, but for our general obligation for streets and neighborhoods, we always issue those on a 20-year horizon. Typically, for our public facilities like fire stations, police stations, we typically do 20-year financings as well.
I understand that, but the point is we have a whole lot of debt outstanding, and that entire portfolio of obligations would have a duration, and that dictates how much difference the change in interest rates make. So we can talk offline. I would just like to look a little more closely at that.
He's going to join the quality management team. That's it. We got a new member.
Do you have any debt ceiling questions?
Do you have any debt ceiling questions?
Oh, egg goes to Washington, huh? Here we go. I know, I know. Okay. Before, I wanted to recognize that Councilmember Ashmira has come in, and I know that she may have some remarks or comments about what we're overall looking at from her perspective as Chair of our Intergovernmental, da-da-da-da.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the Budget Governance and Intergovernmental Committee did review our budget workshop plan, and there were a few changes that were made. But today's focus, as clearly Ryan had indicated earlier, it's going to be in our capital investment plan because I know that continues to be a priority for this council. So based on that feedback, a budget workshop is scheduled. As you can clearly see, we are not immune to inflationary environment or higher cost of capital projects. So staff will talk about the options that we have. But I do want to take an opportunity to recognize committee members, Vice Chair Mr. Mitchell, Committee Member Dante Anderson, Tarek Bukhari, and Lawanna Mayfield. So that's all we have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jones, who's next?
Okay, so we'll turn it over to Ryan.
So we will now shift into talking about some of the bond project updates for our existing projects. So we'll bring up Phil Rieger, Director of General Services, and Jennifer Smith, who is our City Engineer.
Again, I'm Phil Rieger, General Services Director, and it's a pleasure to be here today to provide an update on the city's general capital investment program. Before I get started, I'd just like to introduce the General Services Team that will do the lion's share of the work here today. They'll do the most of the presentation. To my right is Jennifer Smith, our City Engineer. Jennifer will update you on the general CIP. David Wolf later in the meeting will, David's the Deputy Director of Asset Management for General Services. He'll review the city's facility maintenance program. And then Sarah Hazel will be joining us. She's the Chief Sustainability and Resiliency Officer, and she's going to share with council the work that she's been doing as it relates to energy efficiency in our facilities. And so we'll look forward to that. So at your annual strategy session, Mr. Bergman shared with you the inflationary pressures that we're experiencing nationally. The inflation over the past 18 months has created some challenges that are impacting our projects here locally. And so that shouldn't be a surprise to you all. Specifically, the construction industry is experiencing a shortage in skilled labor, and that shortage is driving up labor wages. COVID disrupted the supply of many materials, such that our projects are experiencing long lead times in acquiring those materials. And these are materials that were once very much readily available. This disruption in the supply chain, along with inflation, has created price uncertainty and generally driven up the cost of materials. And that price uncertainty has created a situation where subcontractors and suppliers are not as readily willing to hold prices for prime contractors. And as a result, contractors are building that risk into their bids, and the city's receiving bids that exceed the budget expectations. So the graph in the lower left-hand corner, which is a graph that Mr. Bergman shared with you earlier, depicts the national trend in increasing bid prices. And of course, we're experiencing that here locally. The graph describes a trend of approximately 20% inflation from previous years. Now, these increases are partially driven by the increases in raw materials, including steel, concrete, and asphalt. And so the larger graph here plots the percent change in construction material prices over time. And there are two really important takeaways from this graph. First, while good news, you'll see that the peak in those increases might be behind us as evidenced by the price increases trending down, it's important to understand that this does not mean that prices are going down. It just means that prices, that the increase in prices are reducing. So prices are increasing at a slower rate. Prices are still going up, they're just going up slower. The second point or takeaway is you'll notice that the inflationary pressures have an impact on some materials more than others. And so not all materials are created equal here. And as a result, it shouldn't be a surprise that our projects have been impacted differently depending on the materials required to complete any given project. So try to pull this all together before I turn it over to Jennifer. I just wanted to remind council about the process that projects go through, as depicted here on the screen. The slide generally depicts what a typical process for a transportation project looks like. And you'll notice that there are many steps. But maybe most importantly for today's discussion is where we and when we establish a budget for the project. And of course, you're very familiar that we try to go through an advanced planning process where we get our projects to 30% design so that we can give as accurate a budget estimate as we can. And so that is depicted by the gray line on the left side of the slide. You'll notice that there's several steps before we get to the bid phase of a project. And the bid phase is where you actually begin to understand and establish what the actual cost of the project is. And of course, we, if we've done our estimates well, the cost or the budget that we've established and the cost of the projects will be very close. You'll notice that there's a gap between when we set the project or set the budget and when we take the projects to bid, and that gap represents, can represent a few years. And so because we know that costs increase over time, we build in cost escalation into our budget estimates to make sure that when it comes time to construct the project, we have enough money. Our challenge today is that the assumptions that we made when we established the budget estimates about cost escalation are far exceeded by the inflation we're experiencing. And as a result, we have turned it over to Ms. Smith, and she's going to walk through a more specific overview of our general capital program so that you can better understand how the economy is impacting us here locally.
So as Phil shared, material prices increases have varied significantly. And we have several bridge projects that are on the horizon that will go to bid this calendar year or early next year. And these projects were budgeted several years ago. We did include escalation, but not to the degree as what we're seeing in the market. The main materials on bridge projects are steel and concrete, whether that be the steel beams, the reinforcing steel that's in the foundation for the bridge, the handrails on the bridge, and then there's concrete in that bridge decking in those foundations and some of the walls that are along the edge of the bridge. One other thing I'd like to point out that's different on a bridge is the way we place the concrete when we're building that bridge is very different and much more expensive than we're putting concrete down on a sidewalk project. The equipment's different, the labor is different, so that increases the cost of concrete when you're talking about a bridge project. And so here are a couple of unit prices on price changes on the steel and concrete that we're seeing. So the steel costs have increased 45% to 60% over the past year. Concrete is increasing anywhere from 50% to 100% depending on what type of concrete we're looking at related to bridges. So using these unit prices, our project costs increase around $9 to $23 million. So on roadway and street scape projects, the major items on these projects are, again, concrete with your sidewalks, your multi-use path, your carbon gutter. And then also, storm drainage plays a big piece that we put in, whether that be pipes or catch basins. And then asphalt, which is essentially the road surface. These unit prices have experienced lower increases than what we've seen on the bridge items, but you can still see that the increases range from 12% up to 50% depending on the item. So using these higher unit price numbers, our projects, the cost increases around $1 to $11 million. So as Phil had shared, depending on the type of project, we're seeing much higher effects or costs on different projects. So kind of summarizing the entire transportation bond set of projects that we have, we have 103 bond projects, 19 of which were completed on target since last year. And for all the active projects, we are currently evaluating value engineering and scope reduction opportunities to try and stay within the current budget as much as possible. We're also seeking alternative funding sources, whether that be CRTPO, funds, grants, or whatever else we can find. We're also, you see there where we have seven projects over budget, those estimated increase, those seven projects will go to bid between now and June of '24. And that total estimated funding need may be between $10 and $34 million. Of the other projects that aren't going to bid within the next year to June of 2024, we'll continue to watch those projects and update our bid prices as we receive new bids. The other type of bond projects are neighborhood bond projects. The neighborhood bonds includes the Corridor of Opportunities, the Comprehensive Neighborhood Improvement Program, or CNIPS, the Neighborhood Reinvestment Program, and a few other older programs. We currently have 33 projects, of which nine have been completed on target since last year. The six projects that are currently at risk are all within the CNIP program. We're currently evaluating value engineering and scope reduction opportunities to fit within the existing budget, and where applicable, seeking alternative funding sources. We're managing this program as intended by completing the projects in priority order in each of the CNIP area with the highest moving first. So Ryan, I think you're up next.
Okay, so to get a presentation on a workshop, you have to agree to let me have the last slide. So I'll try to kind of summarize the key points here. What Jennifer is talking about on the transportation bonds, the existing projects that $10 to $34 million, think of that as a pessimistic and an optimistic scenario of what we might need. The good news is, over these next three bond cycles, we do have capacity that exists beyond that. And so this is just that same slide calling attention to that. What I would say is, we're in a unique environment, and while we've identified $10 to $34 million of existing projects now, that doesn't mean that we might not have issues again next year or the year after as we go through this. So what I would ask is that we try not to pin us down on an exact amount. We're confident that we do have capacity to account for this, which is a decent story in itself that we don't have to stop any of the existing programs that we have up there. But it's also not a bond year, as we'll talk about in the next presentation, so we do have a little bit of time to work through this. So with that, I think we can turn it over for questions.
All right, so we've got a number of questions. Why don't we just start on this end and come around? Ms. Ashmira, followed by Mr. Mitchell, and then Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Ryan, at least it's a good news that our unprogrammed capacity can cover some of this inflationary cost. I noticed that our previous capacity was $226 million, and now it's $210 million. So would that put us exactly where we are covering, pretty much we are using up all of our capacity, if we were to?
Yeah, so that program capacity over the next three bond cycles is based on the new steady state, which is the $210 million. So it wouldn't, from that $77 million, we would need a plan to cover the existing projects. But the steady state, having gone down due to some of the things that Teresa talked about, that's already been accounted for.
Got it. So previously, we had $226 million in capacity. What were we using? What was, I know we didn't use all $226 million capacity.
So when we built the budget last year, because of the environment we were in, we essentially left an amount in each of those bonds that was unprogrammed. And it was more than $77 million, I think it was $125 million. So the $125 essentially became 77 because of the cost of borrowing and us spending quicker. But the 77 that's left is based on the current point in time, steady state scenario.
Got it. So certainly that speaks to a good financial management, where we had some capacity, we did not use it entirely 100%. Have we, do we have, or have we considered not using all of the capacity? Mr. Manager, to your recommendation, certainly the needs are there. We have a lot of needs when it comes to infrastructure, especially our transportation and our neighborhood improvement projects that we have underway. But is there a recommendation that you all have in terms of not using or keeping at least some cushion in our bond capacity?
Thank you, Councilmember Ashmira. Yes, and you'll see more in the next presentation, but for the most part, it's not a bond year this year, so you really don't have to make that decision. What we would strongly recommend is that you don't talk about programming any of this unprogrammed capacity as we get through this next budget cycle, get closer to the bond, the next bond that comes up in 2024. But I guess most importantly, and Ryan, I promise I won't go do the presentation, is what's in the 2024 bond compared to what was in the 2022. And you'll see that even before you start to, you know, to discuss additional capacity, it's very, very different in the amount of spend or the amount of projects that are important to you. We really did a lot in the 2022 bond, but things have changed in the out years.
Okay. At some point, I'm sure we'll go over some of these projects that are at risk and those are over budget, that are under transportation and neighborhood bond. I'd like to see the list eventually, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for saying that, because we did not point that out. We actually did include a list in here, the blue and yellows. And so please feel free to email me or Marie any project you'd like some more information on, and we'll provide you a full report on those projects.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Ashmira, any further questions or comment? All right, Mr. Mitchell?
Mayor, Ryan just touched on it. If you could just provide a list, the ones at risk, just so we can look at those. And thank you for letting us know, so we have a more proactive approach. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Ryan, I heard you make a comment around, do not ask us for a specific number, and I was going to ask you for a specific number. So you cut me off at the pass. However, I did hear that you all, we baked in escalation into our numbers. Two questions there. Is it just a particular escalation rate that you bake in across the board, whether it's a transportation project or a neighborhood project? And if yes or no, and if so, then what is, what's that percentage or rate, if you can share that?
Absolutely, and I'll let the city engineer answer this. I did want to apologize for stealing your seat today, though.
Yes, for our roadway and neighborhood bonds, transportation bonds, we did include the past couple of years, ten percent for the first year, and I think then a ten percent for the second year, and then a seven and a half percent for the third year. And so as Phil had shared, those bid prices, we were seeing twenty percent. And so that's, you know, some of the bridge projects, you saw that the difference was greater than on the roadway projects, where the roadway projects, the unit prices weren't as high as the bridge items, so...
And so given the environment that we're in now and the outlook, would you modify that escalation percentage on a go-forward basis to absorb some of the potential headwinds we could hit?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's also why there's that range. We really don't know what we don't know, right? And so when we bid a project and we bid several projects in a row, we're going to get a better idea of what that unit price is here in Charlotte. And so that will help us also, I think, maybe narrow that range down, the more projects we bid.
That makes sense. And so between the at-risk projects and the over-budget projects, I did not notice the list in the back, thank you for that, but is there any prioritization amongst the at-risk versus over-budget? Is that something that we need to assist with, or have you, do you have a recommendation?
So I think what I would say is, there's a prioritization with our process where we start with the things that were essentially named projects that were on bonds, and those will always get higher priority. The projects that are within programs are more likely to go through things such as value engineering and scope reduction and things of that nature.
Perfect, okay, great, thank you.
Can I make one also clarification? The over-budget projects that are in the transportation are the ones that are going this year, right? And some of the at-risk projects may, we may be within budget if prices come down, but if prices stay really high, then that's when they may become over budget. So that's why we kind of have them classified at risk. There's still a chance that we would come within budget.
Okay. But then there's also that opportunity for them to cross over the threshold to become over budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Mayor Protam.
I think you just started to get into it. I was going to ask about what the definition of at-risk is. Is at-risk a going over budget?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, okay. And then if something goes over budget, I guess what Ms. Anderson, kind of carrying on what Ms. Anderson asked, at what point does it become untenable to do in relation to it going, a project going over budget? Is there a certain threshold that you decide it's a no-go, or do you need to come back to us?
So what I would say is, we would typically, with the budget process, with this workshop, and then going into the proposed budget, we would try to come to you with solutions. If there was something that we felt was just a level where it completely changes, and we would be asking you to maybe not do that project, which we've done in the past, I'm not going to bring up any names, but we would certainly bring it to you at a forum like this. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Graham, you have a comment? Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Mayor. We established some time ago a revolving credit facility, which if you go to Slide four, I think, there, which was intended to avoid being way off on our budgeting by pursuing a process to get closer to an estimate. And that was being funded from a revolver, I think it was twenty million. So I'm just wondering what the outstanding amount is and what the status is of the revolver.
Yeah, so we created the advanced planning fund maybe four years ago now. We put twenty million dollars of debt service fund cash into it for it to operate. And the way that it works is, as things are approved by the voters or go into our COPs, we basically are able to reimburse that revolving fund.
I understand, I'm just wondering what the balance is outstanding right now.
So we, right now, we do not need to do anything with that because of the reimbursement that we got from the bonds that were just approved and the fire facilities program. So in this upcoming budget, we likely don't need to take any action on that. Basically, that would become an issue down the road if we have a significant amount of projects that don't go forward, or it's just more than the twenty million can handle. So I mean, Jennifer, I don't know if you have a specific amount right now.
Yeah, it's around four million that's left from...
But you think it's sufficient to meet the ongoing needs?
Yes.
I would make one more general comment, and that is, if we look at this, what we're not seeing is a schedule of all the identified needs, like all the road projects, the side way projects and so on. And we are not assessing this capacity against identified needs and a schedule of amounts we really ought to spend in order to keep our roads in good shape, in order to kind of meet the growth of the city and address the biggest problems. So I don't know how to interpret this. I can tell you offhand that to have seventy-something million dollars of available capacity over three bond cycles strikes me as being incredibly little, right? I mean, and look at the magnitude of the problems we've discussed. Even just the street surfacing and sidewalks numbers we saw. Don't want to get political, but for me, the investment we're making in our housing priority is extravagant against these other things, and I worry that we aren't able to identify a hole that we might be getting into, a can that we might be kicking down the road by sort of doing two road projects in our budget, in an environment where we've seen all this growth and we expect all this future growth. So I think a better-developed plan for what we expect to be able to do, that we could compare with what we need to do, might inform us better as we make these allocation choices. And, you know, I don't know how complicated that would be, Mr. Manager, but if you see what I mean, we don't know what needs we need to meet. And therefore, we have no basis to decide whether seventy-something million or a hundred-and-twenty-five million or whatever is a good place to be. My personal opinion is that we are getting deeper into a kind of a hole in the face of the growth we're experiencing and this like thirty-year maintenance cycle on the roads. And I would just like for us to have clear visibility on what that is.
Yeah. Councilmember Driggs, I don't disagree with you at all, and we'll touch upon it in the next couple of presentations, but to your point, I wouldn't focus on this unprogrammed capacity because potentially it's even going to get smaller. I would focus on how much I've set aside for sidewalks, how much I've set aside for roads, intersections, things of that nature. But because if you take a look at the next three bond cycles, all you have are two roads, two intersections, and that takes you out to 2030. And that is not adding anything new, not adding any additional capacity. So you are correct that when you start to look at the list of needs, while it's great to be, you know, at the steady state to make sure we have a financial house in order, that those three bond cycles will not support the growth that the city is seeing.
So I know it's a difficult subject, and it's not going to be a pretty picture, but I don't think we should hide from it. I think we just need to try and align what we know we're going to want to do with the existing capacity we have, and then think about how we prioritize or whether we are invisibly getting behind on things like road maintenance, because those roads, after seventeen years, cost a lot more to fix them. So are we setting ourselves up for big bills for road maintenance at a later date? Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bakari?
Yeah, I'll just piggyback on that point. And again, I don't think this is a surprise to anyone. We've kind of been seeing this slow-moving train coming here for a little while. But I think the two points I'd make, just to emphasize, are, one, I think it is highly crucial as we look on programming out this smaller, if you will, bond pool in the relative scheme of things, that we don't make any decisions in a silo, thinking about this one topic, and we want to do this. We have to think about it in its, in the holistic bucket of money. And that includes affordable housing. And then secondarily, beyond that, and I think we really need to understand where we're prioritizing the roads and everything in that bucket within there. And then number two, I think this plays into our broader conversation that's dominating the year so far of transformational investments in transportation and the balance of all of these things. I think it's quite clear when you look at, which by no stretch is this a small amount of money, for many towns across this state, that is a huge amount of money. But when you look at the need we have in roads, you know, it isn't even a fraction of what's going to get us there. So I think as we're having these conversations about the strategic mobility plan, about a referendum, about a sales tax, of which it pains me to say it, but it's also important to say it out loud, if we are ever going to have a chance to prioritize roads and perhaps balance it with some form of moving transit forward, we've got to, we've got to think on that path and how we can solve those problems, because it's the only scale level that's going to possibly get us there.
All right. Well, you have a question, Ms. Ashmira, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Ryan, thank you so much for providing this detailed list. This is very helpful. I was looking at the transportation and neighborhood projects, and I noticed at the end, there are various facilities projects. So could we possibly use another type of sort of certificate of bonds or another leveraging tool where it frees up our capacity to do more transportation or neighborhood projects, especially on police stations, fire stations?
Sure, yeah, we have, we have the bonds, and then we have the certificates of participation. After we talk about the bond outlook in the next presentation, we'll talk a little bit more about our facilities program. So the reality is, other than taking care of our current buildings and a few operational equity things that we think we need to address, the rest of the capacity that we have out there in facilities is really likely to be for fire stations, where we feel the need that to address some of the response time lags as the city grows by building and replacing new fire stations throughout. So to add more to bonds, yes, you could theoretically take some money from what we use for facilities, but it just leads to a different problem.
So I guess I just want to make sure I'm saying this correctly. Certainly, this is, the projects that are on here, those are all high-priority projects. Otherwise, they would not have ended up here, including fire station and police station. So I'm not saying we de-prioritize that. I'm just saying if there is another financing tool that we can use on our facilities, sort of like a mortgage that doesn't take into account our debt capacity, so that could free up some of the, some of the capacity for other transportation projects and the neighborhood projects that we have.
I think Ms. Ashmira has really just pointed out the crux of this argument. There are many things that are required that we have, we could not stop building fire stations where, you know, the cost of insurance for every building goes up because we don't maintain our response time and our rating of number one. So when you start talking about those kinds of things, you have to begin to look and say what's most important, because there are rippling effects to almost every decision that will be made, as Mr. Bakari said, that Mr. Driggs, all of you have expressed, and then there is the actual responsibility to do those things that would not cost as much. Like, you know, all of us have been driving our roads. We all know that there are holes in them, and we all know that those holes just get wider and wider, and people start calling you and saying, how come I got a flat tire? I get those calls a lot. But I will say that this moment of whether or not we can continue to live under the way that we've always done business is the moment that is an inflection point for us in our growth and what we're trying to achieve. So I too look at, and I, and I think about this, a road project, you can probably take five fire stations and not finish one road project. It wouldn't matter, because it's not going to be accessible for the amounts to be equal. They serve different purposes, and they, they each have a purpose. We wouldn't be the city that we have today without that purpose. So in some respects, I, I know it's a, I think Mr. Driggs said, a difficult conversation, but we can't run from it, and we've got to make a decision whether or not we're going to actually do something about transportation and striping our streets and paving our streets and creating capacity, whether or not we're going to deal with mobility at all. This is the time that we have to have that discussion and not hide from it as a council. So I understand how much and how difficult this is. Believe me, I know how difficult it is. But at some point, the people in this community deserve the ability to move around the city and to do it so that they can get to work and home. And we've all, we all acknowledge that. So what are we going to do? I think, give us some time, Mr. Jones and Mr. Bergman, to kind of learn and settle in what this is, but it's going to be a conversation this council has to lead.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you for setting it up that way, Mayor. You know, we started off in this first budget workshop, and we're really talking about capital. And then the next one, it'll be more around operations, things of that nature. There's going to be a revale. There's going to be so many things that are going on that it seems like potentially it's easier to do nothing. But I just want to make sure that we pile all of these on each other and have a good look at what's happening, because again, Councilmember Ashmira, you were wise to move the revale to the second budget workshop, but we'll have a very different series of discussions around that, too, but it won't take away the need that we have to make these investments in our infrastructure.
Okay, Mr. Driggs?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Can we refer future pothole complaints to you?
I thought you already had deferred them to me. And it's amazing to me, people call and say, yeah, my Mercedes, I can't believe that the streets are this bad. And I'm like, yeah, they are. And yes, they will be unless we're willing as a community, and I don't, I don't put it on the council, unless you, as a member of this community, are willing to support the efforts to maintain. There, there are parts of our city that will be increasingly at risk if we don't do some of this work.
All right, I guess I turn it over with that good news to Mr. Bergman again.
And we are going to reiterate some of that news in this presentation as well. So just a few slides here to talk about the bond plan with the current capacity that we have now. So I'm going to turn it over to Tiffany Blackwell, who's a senior analyst in the Budget Office and helps manage our capital program.
Great, thank you. And I know there's a lot of excitement about this already, so I think you guys are going to go super easy on me, so I'm excited about that. So we want to start off thanking the voters. We are currently in our 2022 bond, FY23, and we are planning our upcoming FY22. We are currently in our 2022 bond, FY '23, and we are planning our upcoming FY '24 budget. Just a reminder that this is not a bond year. The city just got access to those bond funds, and we're hoping that we can use this non-bond year for our long-term budget and bond outlook. So we've been planning the two highest road and intersection projects for the last several years through our advanced planning process. We spoke about that briefly earlier. Since these projects were not ready in the 2022 bond, we were able to significantly increase sidewalks and Vision Zero funding. You'll see those highlighted in yellow at the top. As we start to construct those roads and intersections, we do not have capacity to maintain programs at that higher level. So in the plan, they return to the pre-2022 level, you'll see on the left. Everything in here is what was in the budget that you currently have. So we're shifting to look at the budget, excuse me, at the bond outlook for the upcoming three bonds. There are some things where we have agreements in place. Those are the first two items for Innovation District and Ballantyne Reimagine, where we already have agreements in place. And then there are other programs that we must continue to do, essentially to keep the lights on, or the streetlights on, if you will. Street resurfacing was at a higher level in '22 because the Powell funds were reduced by the state. If the funds are not restored, we will need to contribute more than the $8 million you see there, but we do not have to make that determination until the next budget year. So the first line is the last slide of the total funding. And other than the four named transportation projects, everything else you see on the table is a program. The capacity highlighted in green will be reduced by the cost increases we discussed earlier, and we're still working on that exact number, so someone already stole my thunder on that one, but that's okay. I'm going to turn it over to Ryan, because he has to have the last slide.
Have to have the last word. So I won't reiterate some of these points, because we actually did talk about them during the last presentation. But a couple ones that I do want to elevate, that third one there, I think it's also important that we realize that even if we get the programs to the same level that they were a few years ago, that's just not going to go as far. So we have that kind of inflation on our programs that also impacts us a little bit different way. But the main message here, and like Tiffany said, this is the outlook that we put in the budget last year. We lost a little bit of that unprogrammed capacity. We'll likely need to use some of it to do some more. But overall, what we're really doing is, we're putting some money into our programs, we're taking care of the things we absolutely have to take care of. And then through the 2028 bond, what we're doing is those two roads and those two intersection projects. So as capacity exists now, we likely wouldn't even want to put a new road or intersection project in advanced planning for a few years. So I won't go any further, since we've talked about it some, but we are open for questions.
All right. Mayor Proton?
So, you know, that's concerning. That's a concerning presentation, and I think, you know, we've been marching up to this for a while now. I think, you know, we can look at it, as Mr. Driggs suggested earlier, about repurposing a, you know, $50 million capacity that, you know, that we apply to affordable housing, but I don't think we can hide behind that not being a problem and a place that we do need to invest in innovative solutions. Or we can have more of a serious discussion about how do we increase revenue to pay for our growth. I think that's where it lies, and I think we, as a council, really do have to approach that head-on. It shouldn't be something that we leave to political debates. It's about, do we want to keep investing in Charlotte so people and goods can move in and through our city? And it's not something that we really should, in my opinion, not decide on between now and the end of this budget cycle, or this budget process. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, let's move forward. Is it Tiffany? Keep going.
Oh, no. I'm going to turn it over to our next presentation, but thank you, though.
All right. So we will now move into our city facility program. Like was mentioned earlier, it does use, for the debt aspect of it, it does use certificates of participation, which still count against capacity but are a little bit different. So we'll have the General Services Team walk you through some of the challenges and advanced planning projects and the outlook.
So Ryan, if you don't mind, I'll do a little lead-in as everybody's getting settled. You know, as a manager, this isn't necessarily the items that council members get excited about when it comes into HVAC systems and a roof or things of that nature. But it's very, very important that we address these, because you don't want to be in a situation where systems and buildings are failing. So while it may not be something that the voters see all the time, it's something that's very important, that we need to keep our infrastructure strong, too.
So I spoke earlier about bond funding, and Councilmember Ashmira, you talked about COPS, so I get to talk about COPS-funded projects as well. So these are our facilities, and we currently have nine general fund facility projects, two of which were completed since last year. The project shown here in yellow included escalation in their budget, similar to the transportation neighborhood projects. However, it was not as high as what we have been experiencing over the past year. The CNPD Northwest Division Station is the last division station in the six police station program that was budgeted several years ago and is currently showing as over budget. The three fire stations and the HVAC replacement, those are showing at risk. And I explained kind of at risk. If we get good bid prices, we're probably okay. If the bid prices come in a little high, we might be a little over. So we're really watching those four projects very closely. And you can see here that the need may be anywhere from $4 to $20 million on these types of projects, depending on how those bid prices come in.
Jennifer or Ryan, COPS, we use it all the time, but would you please explain what those are and how they work for the council?
Yeah, so it's, I'm only taking this because Teresa stepped out. Certificates of Participation is what COPS stands for. And when you have a bond that the voters approve, the voters are voting that they are backing the debt with taxation authority, so that we will always pay that debt. With COPS, it's much more similar to a mortgage. You have an asset that is backing the debt, which is the key difference.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Ashmira?
So when I was talking about the facilities, we are not using our bond capacity for our facility. It's all COPS, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So ultimately, there is nothing to really free up, because we are already using COPS, sort of mortgage concept, to do all our facility projects?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So we are maximizing our capacity?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
So currently...
Mr. Driggs has a question.
I did have a question about the last slide. The HVAC replacement, I thought I remembered that when all that CARES money originally came in, we identified as an eligible use for it, facility improvements to promote health, including reconfiguring some of our floors and paying for HVAC. So I'm just wondering why that is now a general fund?
So we did use a sizable portion of our CARES money for facility needs, spacing people out, building barriers, things of that nature, but it was never intended for the HVAC project, which was the massive project in the government center. We did, for CARES, have things that we put on the HVAC. I'll turn to Jennifer on that, which is might be what you're thinking of.
Bipolar.
Oh, yes, bipolar ionization. We installed very advanced technology, hospital-level technology, in hundreds of city buildings with the CARES Act money. It's called bipolar ionization, including this building.
So these costs would not have been eligible?
Right. So we use the money for the additional, you know, try to kill viruses in the air, things of that nature. But this type of thing was never part of our CARES Act plans. This is actually, I don't know if it's the second or the third year of a pretty big investment coming up for the HVAC system replacement.
And we couldn't have used this money. We couldn't have used CARES money to pay for this. I'm just, we reached a point where we said, "Okay, here's the amount we have available for, you know, the other uses."
Yeah.
And I wanted to make sure that we did everything we could with the CARES money that was kind of originally intended or by a generous interpretation. So did we miss an opportunity here to pay for that?
I mean, I think we may have been stretching a little bit to try to do that with CARES. I'm not sure exactly if we could have done it, but, I mean, all of our CARES money went to something, so it would have been something else that we wouldn't have been able to do.
Right. I just would have regarded this as kind of a more immediate use of it, rather than ending up as we are with a general fund burden from this. But, okay, it is what it is. Thank you.
So we currently have six facility projects in the advanced planning program, and they're at various stages, as shown here. Two, we have completed programming and conceptual design, and I'll share estimated funding needs here in just a minute. But what I did want to remind you, and this kind of came up a little earlier, Ryan kind of stole the thunder here, but that we did have a major investment in the fire facilities program the past year or two, I think it was. And I had shared on my active slide that three of those firehouses were actually, had moved out of advanced planning and are actually moving forward. And the remaining one that is in advanced planning now is the River District. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight that a little bit. And so back to the two projects that have completed the conceptual design, and we have an estimate for, whoops, I skipped one too many, is the Firehouse Gender Equity Study that was done. What we did was prioritize the four highest priority firehouses, and they're moving through to that 30% design level. The conceptual level estimate per firehouse is between $2.2 and $3.5 million each. And the goal here is to modernize the bathrooms, the showers, the locker rooms, and the exercise facilities. Will also include some various ADA improvements. And then next was the Innovation Barn. Council added this project into advanced planning last year. The conceptual level estimate assumes renovations to the left half of the, I know the diagram is not so great here, but the left half that is shaded is the area that would be renovated. And it would include bathrooms, new mechanical and electrical rooms, walls that would create about seven separate office spaces, floor leveling, paint and trim, and that estimate is between $5.5 and $7 million. And I share with you a lot of information about new facilities and major renovations. And once a facility is constructed, they require ongoing maintenance. So David Wolf is here to share information with you about the facility maintenance.
Thank you, Jennifer. And good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Again, I'm David Wolf, Deputy Director of General Services Asset Management Group. I'm honored and very grateful, actually, to have a few minutes to talk with you about building maintenance and our general fund portfolio of buildings. So we maintain 115 occupied facilities, police, fire, and our own general services department being the largest customers here, and a little more than 50 other structures. Those other structures include warehouses, IT cabinets, and EV charging stations. And as you can see, we have a large and growing portfolio of buildings. We're currently at 2.9 million square feet under management. We add about a quarter million square feet every five years, and these last five to eight years have been dominated by the police program, where we've added six new police division stations. We estimate the current value of that portfolio at $1.2 billion. And Jennifer's design team typically builds buildings to be 50-plus-year facilities. You guys may know some of our small staff that we have that maintain this building. We have a larger group at our Sprat Street location. And these maintenance staff work with Jennifer's design team to make sure our new facilities are made of high-quality materials and energy-efficient equipment. About 18 months ago, we completed a condition analysis for each building in our portfolio. This was done by our own staff, utilizing a protocol developed by NASA for their stock of buildings. We're really benefiting from the effort that we undertook. Process results in a lot of granular data for us at the building systems level, things like interior floors and walls, exterior windows and doors, plumbing, electrical HVAC, and several other systems. And that's how we use the data on a daily basis, is to ensure that our staff are spending our time and resources where the needs are greatest. And it also helps with our multi-year project planning, as well as evaluating our staffing levels and needs. So you can roll that granular data up to the building level, and then again, to the portfolio level, which is what this slide is showing, using what's called a facilities condition index. This FCI index is made up of a lot of 1- to 5-point ratings on those, that we made for each of those nine building systems. A lower number simply means better condition, lower needs, higher number, greater needs. This building, for example, the CMGC, is at 13%. It's one of 115, but it's in, it happens to be at the average, and I hope everyone enjoys the experience here. That number does reflect the large HVAC project that is currently in design, so, just an example. And we have a goal to bring that down to 10%. That is just our own internal continual improvement goal. You can see we split the data into several ranges. We're showing the average age of each range. And not to our surprise, or likely anyone else's, younger buildings have fewer needs. We thought it would be helpful to give an example of one of these ranges, look at the 10 buildings in the very last quadrant that, on average, have our greatest need. And here are those 10 locations. You'll recognize some familiar names you may have heard speak of today. And this simply shows the advanced age, I believe the average age was 58 years, as well as the strategy around addressing some of their needs.
Help me, what, CDC, ARD?
Yeah, commissioning, decommissioning, asset recovery on Wilkinson Boulevard, where we sell surplus cars and equipment.
Ah.
And my staff commissioned police, fire, and other city vehicles.
I'm sure everyone else knew that.
I will end my, with one additional slide that presents an additional concept here. This is another industry metric we track from the National Research Council, who recommends a funding target of 2% to 4% in order to maintain your building portfolio in a steady-state condition. So if you think of that condition index we showed, we want to be in this 2% to 4% range to make sure we're stable and hopefully moving in the right direction with the portfolio. And we took a look at this year's FY '23 funding to include personnel operating Pago and COPS funds that are our sources, and happy to report as building managers that we are indeed within the range, currently at 2.1%. And that range is subject to a lot of portfolio-specific conditions, but one of the greatest... And that range is subject to a lot of portfolio-specific conditions, but one of the greatest of them being the age of your portfolio. So we do feel in the future we may need to slide that crown to the right a little bit in order to keep our buildings in great shape. And I'll leave you with one final piece of information. When you consider the total cost of owning a building, in the 50 years or more that we operate in our buildings, the total cost of ownership, about 80% of it is maintenance and utilities. So it's, that's why it's, again, is very important for my staff to work with Jennifer's team, and as well as Sarah's energy team, to make sure that we build sustainable and energy-efficient structures. And with that, thank you for your time, and I'll pass it over to Sarah.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So what I wanted to do was just to provide a little more information about how your capital investments in sustainable infrastructure have impacted city facilities. And I guess just to reiterate David's point, the work that building management does, maintaining our buildings and operating our buildings, has such a huge impact on your strategic energy action plan and your goals to become zero carbon in your building. So I just really wanted to highlight that piece and how these things are so very connected. And what I wanted to do was just walk you through a very recent history of your investments in sustainable buildings and how that aligns to your policies. And so if you look at CMPD South, which achieved a LEED Silver Status in 2021, really demonstrating a strong commitment to sustainability, that building was built solar-ready under your previous sustainable facilities policy. Then with your additional investments in FY 2021 in rooftop solar and solar on-site, that's one location where we were then able to come in and layer that solar right on the building, which offsets the energy use in that building almost 50%. So that's just sort of an example of how that, those investments were put to work. And then calendar year 2021, city council adopted and updated sustainable facilities policy to further align the way that we're not only building and renovating buildings, also managing buildings in alignment with the Strategic Energy Action Plan. So some highlights of that update include not just building, building solar-ready, but including solar on buildings where that is an option. It included a level of electric vehicle charging, but also readiness such that as we continue to electrify our fleet, we don't have to incur costly renovations to our parking lots, they're ready for that type of an outfit. Through that updated sustainable facilities policy, there is also a stronger emphasis on energy efficiency and incorporating different types of technologies and smart energy management solutions that David Wolf's team then leverages. And so Firehouse 45 is one of the buildings that now, under this new policy, is soon to begin construction. And so as a result of that policy being in effect, you'll see more than a 35% energy use reduction from building code standards because of those different elements, as well as a more than 30% water use reduction, that solar built onto that facility, as well as additional infrastructure to support our growing electric fleet and the fleet that will be coming in the future. There we go. So one other piece of this policy was that we would publish our energy use publicly. Obviously, we've been looking at our energy use over time for years, but it's called an energy benchmarking report. Last year, the end of March, we published that first report for the public, so it demonstrates our commitment to sharing that information, but also is an opportunity to look at how we're doing relative to other buildings that are being used in the same way across the country. And so because of that first building energy benchmarking report, and then city council's investment in kind of putting this, this information to use in your last budget cycle, wanted to provide an example of what that looks like. So if you look at CMPD Metro, you're showing that it is a bit above the national median for buildings like that. So based on that information, action was taken to investigate that a bit further. It resulted in an energy model of the facility, and then that model is informing the design of a new HVAC system, which will have, and also some associated energy reduction measures. So I don't know who said HVAC isn't like exciting or sexy, but I beg to differ. I think this is very exciting. And then to go a step further, last year in your budget, you invested in an all-electric firehouse with the complimentary electric fire engine. So I'm kind of looking at the chief over there, who we got a chance to check it out and ride in the fire truck. I did not drive, even in the parking lot, I was a little nervous to do that. But with this sustainable investment in an all-electric facility, it's really giving us the opportunity to learn new technology, not only in the fleet side, but specifically on the building side. And most recently, some of the features included in the design, not only are that infrastructure for charging the electric fire truck, the additional electric vehicle charging and readiness that I spoke of earlier as outlined in your policy, geothermal HVAC, all-electric hot water and bay heating, it'll have all-electric appliances, and that rooftop solar. So it will be an exciting project to continue to watch, and potentially, we think, one of the first all-electric fire stations with an all-electric fire truck when that comes to fruition. And so now I will hand it back to the gentleman with the last slide.
And for the record, Sarah, I think it was your boss that said HVAC's not exciting?
No.
I don't know if I would have corrected him, but. Okay, if we go to the last slide, so we always like to use these budget workshops to get information from you guys to signal things. One of the things we really are trying to signal is that there's data behind our building plan, there's data behind our maintenance plan, and that we put a significant amount of dollars that, like the manager said, isn't the most exciting thing to tell constituents, but it's really important for our long-term planning. So what you'll see up here is the five-year COPS CIP that's in the current budget. And you can see there that there was $60 million in out-years of planning. And so what we're trying to signal is that we feel that that $60 million in this upcoming budget needs to do a few things. We will need to take care of some inflationary costs on existing projects. We will likely need to increase our capital maintenance funding for existing buildings. And the point I'd make is, the money that we typically put into fixing roofs and HVACs and do some other things, like Sarah says, it does have SEAP benefits as well. But beyond that, when we're advancing projects from advanced planning, there's a limited amount of resources, and so we really feel that we need to focus on a couple of areas, things that improve operational response. I keep talking about fire stations, and the chief will be in front of you guys Monday to talk some more about that. But then also, we do have some operational equity issues, like Jennifer mentioned, with Lek, over to you guys.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So on Slide 15, where you list out, Sarah, the energy usage per building versus the national median, what's driving the high energy usage for Eastway and Freedom, the one to the left? Is it the lifespan of the age of the buildings? Is it a population driver? What's driving that much higher energy use?
So I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but what I can explain is how we go about looking at that. So sometimes, so we get, we get this information, and it's helpful, but it doesn't tell the whole story. Sometimes we talk to the folks who are managing the buildings, and they can tell you exactly what is driving that higher energy use. Maybe the building's about to be renovated, maybe there's an issue with the windows, you know, there, sometimes it's something that if you look a little deeper, there's an explanation, and maybe it's already in the works for being addressed, or it's on plan for future efforts. But sometimes we have to do an energy audit, and we have to do other types of measures to further investigate that. And when we do that, then we look at that, and we look at the resources that are allotted, and figure out how can we best spend those funds to address those issues. But on those two particular buildings, I'd be happy to get back to you.
So from a facilities perspective, you know, there's technology out there that will allow us to operate and maintain our buildings through a single pane of glass, right, relative to, you know, utility usage and other information on those buildings. Do we have, do we have a system like that with the city?
Yes, we do. Building automation systems, I believe you're speaking of?
Yeah.
Yes, we do. We monitor all, lots of HVAC data remotely through building automation systems, yes.
Okay.
I can't, I can't speak, some of my staff helped in preparing this. I'll just make a comment that we're only looking at eight buildings. We have an energy manager that's worked for, since the 90s, on our energy use, and I, you, a quick story, you may know of energy service companies that, who, their business model is to come into your organization, help you reduce utility bills, and they take a portion of their, of the difference. We've had a few look at our energy use across our whole portfolio, and they said, there's no money for us to make here. Thank you for sharing some data, but we're going to back out. So we're really proud of our whole portfolio, and we'll certainly get some more information about those four buildings.
Well, that's certainly really great feedback, especially for those auditors who come in to look at the usage. So I'm, I'm interested in our, I heard that the total cost of ownership of the city's buildings is approximately 80% maintenance and utilities. Given, given that information, do, do we feel like our sustain, new sustainability facility policies are bold enough? Because it's, it seems like that's a spin that is attackable and addressable, that we can manage through innovation and proper additional management, right? So is, do we feel like our stance today is bold enough, or are we pigeon-holed by budget constraints in terms of what we can invest in?
No, we're, we feel very good about the sustainable facilities policy. We're part of that team that creates it, and yes, I think it is a bold vision for Charlotte.
Okay.
And that 80% is just a, another standard number, is, I had not looked at that for Charlotte buildings, but it's a kind of a nationwide average.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Eschmira, followed by Mr. Driggs.
Thank you, Mayor May. Great questions, Ms. Anderson. I was actually going to ask that. If you go back to the slide where you have a ratio of 2.1%, that's just the industry funding level. So as, as we are continuing to invest in our SEAP, especially in our facilities, do you see this number reducing? Obviously, first we'll have to go through all the facilities improvement before we see the number, but where do you see this number after we implement our 2030 goals for our facilities, for our fleet as well?
Well, this number includes all building systems, carpet, paint, everything, and it kind of adjusts itself for inflation as the cost of buildings go up, you know? So it's just a range that's been around for a long time, and we're, we're very grateful that we're, you know, within this recommended range. It's part of the reason we have well-functioning facilities and happy customers. I really don't have a prediction of where it might go with energy. I will say that my staff works with, alongside Sarah's, so that the HVAC buildings that need to be addressed from an energy use index, we, we combine those into, make sure those are also our older, beyond useful life HVAC systems that are ready for replacement anyway.
One thing, just to add to that point, similarly with solar, right, like we're looking at replacing, we're not going to put solar on a roof that's going to be replaced in a couple of years. We're going to work to make sure those strategic investments are, are done at the same time and maximized, so that you can see the highest return on, on that, so.
Right. I think having, I'm glad that we are measuring our investments and how they're actually creating a value for us in the long term, at least whether it's energy use reduction or whether it's water use reduction. I think at the end of the day, you know, when we look at our SEAP goals, yes, we wanted to go carbon-free, and that was our goal, but ultimately, it actually helps the bottom line, right, from the long-range perspective, in addition to the health benefits. So I'm glad that we are actually continuing, I would love to continue to see this kind of metrics, to see are we also, how are we adding value to our bottom line? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted a clarification on Plud 17. You've got $20 million a year, I guess funded with COPS for these maintenance activities, if we could look at that? So our debt capacity number includes the COPS, right?
Yes.
I mean, it used to be 190 plus 30, and now it's a bit less. So if I look at page three in our book, where is the $20 million a year, which is $40 million per bond cycle, where do we see that?
So you would actually have to add the 210 on top of what's in here to get the full steady state. It's not as simple as far as COPS, because when you do some massive things like build fire stations, you do have to front-load a little bit. So last year, when we had the steady state, it essentially had a bond amount that factored in this exact plan that's up here. And so you do this exact plan in COPS, and then the capacity that's left in the debt is what led to the 226 last year. And now this plan staying the same would lead to the 210 this year in bonds.
So this is actually borrowing in addition to the identified debt capacity?
Correct. Yep.
And I'm not sure I understand why that wouldn't just be included in the debt capacity and then show up as a use.
You could, it just gets a little confusing to show because the COPS facilities isn't necessarily the same number every year because big projects jump around. And so we just showed it a little bit differently, the bond steady state, and then the COPS plan.
Yeah, I would just like to kind of over-disclose on COPS because they're not subject to a vote by the public, whereas the GO bonds are, and therefore, all of this takes place a little bit out of the public eye. And I think at a minimum, we should somehow make clearer how that aligns with the information we are disclosing about our capacity and our uses. Thank you.
Okay, so for our last presentation, we will bring up Monica Holmes to talk a little bit about corridors of opportunity. And I am not taking the last slide on this one, so.
Just going to get you situated and get.
Thank you so much.
Do you want click?
Oh, yeah, all right. I was going to stand up here since it's just me. I'm at the table by myself. Yeah, exactly. You set a good precedent. Okay, good afternoon. How are y'all doing?
Good.
Good. So Monica Holmes, I work on corridors of opportunity. I believe that most of you are well aware of the program, so again, ask questions as we go along. This is meant to serve as a broad update. Okay, so today we'll just be doing a general overview, talking about the framework, the partnerships that we have, and then moving forward into 2023 and where we are headed. So for those of you who are at Economic Development Committee in December, you'll see some similarities, but also some new updates and touchpoints in time. And those that were not will get to see it fresh. So again, corridors of opportunity is really a demonstration of how we commit to six geographic areas in our city. They're areas that are They're areas that are historically under-invested, and it is how we create a long-term opportunity for prosperity and legacy for existing residents and existing business owners in each of the six corridors. By now, we should all be able to rattle off those six corridors, Beatty's Ford, Freedom and Wilkinson, West Boulevard, Sugar Creek, Graham, North Tryon, and Central Albemarle. Maybe I'll use, not use the clicker. Okay. So as we started in fiscal year 2021 with the Corridors of Opportunity program, we really took them in tranches and segments. So the first two corridors to fast-track into implementation were Beatty's Ford Road and West Boulevard. We had a plethora of work done in these corridors. We had targeted investments. We layered them strategically to, at specific energy intersections and nodes where we had different pieces of projects that we could fit together for that larger impact. So those two, you really saw hit the ground running. While those two were hitting the ground running, we started engagement work on Sugar Creek and Central and Albemarle. That, all of that work wrapped up in spring, winter, winter, spring of last year. We went back to the community, unveiled those playbooks over the summer, early fall, and we have since been advancing into implementation on those corridors. And then in parallel to this, so while tracking the implementation of Beatty's Ford and West, while putting together the implementation and strategies of Sugar Creek and Central, we have been advancing North Tryon, North Graham, and Freedom and Wilkinson. So if you have not participated, North Tryon, North Graham went through an intense engagement process this past fall. We're very excited. We actually squished the timeline and added more public meetings for that North Tryon, North Graham engagement, and took what had been previously an 18-month process down into a six-to-nine-month process. So we'll be releasing that playbook in the next month or so. And then we'll be very soon on the heels of that kicking off Freedom and Wilkinson. So by the end of this fiscal year, we'll be well on our way into implementation on those last two corridors. So in 2022, it was a major rebuilding year for Corridors and how we collaborate. If you noticed in the previous slide, we kicked off implementation in two corridors, but we don't leave those corridors, right? So we're consistently adding the work, right? So if you think about it, in 2022, we had a very big aha moment where it was like, for us to do this right and really build and leverage and kind of continue to grow the program, we have to build a system in place with the city that really responds to that. So in May of last year, I came onboard with Corridors. We hired additional staff. So we have a community engagement manager that really is boots-on-the-ground every day in Corridors. We have an operations manager that's looking at the fiscal things, making sure we're getting, getting all of our to-dos done. And then we have a strategy manager kind of looking at the overall pieces. We work between, our team does, between three assistant city managers, nine city departments, and an implementation team of a little over 58, probably give or take, that's probably over 60 today, member departments and county departments. So it's important to realize we're working really closely with Public Health, Parks and Rec, County Manager's Office, the people who kind of touch the pieces of Corridors and how we can connect the dots in that. So once we put together all of that time, it's over 700 hours of staff time weekly, really being focused on Corridors. So we are running a marathon, not a sprint, every day in Corridors of Opportunity. So how Corridors, also as part of that kind of process of 2022, we really set into place also a framework of which we could look at Corridors. So obviously, every project we do in Corridors, we aim to be fiscally responsible on it. And then we've taken six themes from the 2040 plan that are very targeted to the work in Corridors and set up that framework. So our entire implementation team is organized around these six aspects. So housing access for all, safe and equitable mobility, and then you can kind of read the key phrases and targets within that diagram. It is taken directly from the comprehensive plan. So how we address each one of these is set in motion by that framework that you all adopted just over a year and a half ago. I will point out here that is something very different from the way we have organized for projects before, is that you will notice that these themes are not city departments. So the work is not set up where every corridor project in housing is only managed by Housing and Neighborhood Services. So housing access for all is a way to strategically organize across the city. So we have members of the community engagement team, Housing and Neighborhood Services, planning, City Manager's Office, all working on that housing access for all piece to make sure that we're coordinated across the city. Same thing with safe and equitable mobility. Obviously, CDOT is an important part of that, but so is CATS, so is General Services that builds projects. So we're looking really, how do we link together all of those across the city organization? So there are three or more departments represented on each one of our work streams, and they work collaboratively together to form projects and get them done. You'll see here the dollars that have been allocated to Corridors of Opportunity over, over the past three fiscal years. So it totals a little over $62 million, and it can, includes a combination of Pago, CIP dollars, and then general fund kind of other pieces of, pieces of the program. So things like the Alternatives to Violence program, that falls into that bucket. You have pieces of transportation projects, obviously, fall into those bond dollars. And then you have a public-private partnerships and things of that nature and that Pago piece. So this past year, our partnerships have really taken off. These logos represent a little over $50 million of investment from other partners towards Corridors of Opportunity efforts. So as you are all probably aware, United Way just launched their initiative in all six corridors, a little over $5 million. We work together very closely with their quarterback agencies on how we get projects done. We have Loews that's invested in some of our housing work in neighborhoods and some of the home projects to help keep residents in place. You have Lisk and Fifth Third investing. Knight Foundation, obviously, very focused on the West Side and their work there. Beyond Open, which is that Wells Fargo partnership. I don't know if anybody saw the recent press release, but over 75% of their grantees were located in Corridors of Opportunity. We're working with the library on some of their upcoming initiatives so that when they do events and have big investments in their, in Corridors libraries, that we are a part of that conversation. And the list really just goes on. This grows every day. During your retreat, there was an announcement at Truist where we're partnering on two sides that are around really workforce development and building up our organizations within Corridors. So this again shows you a sampling of kind of where we're headed and how we're coordinating investments moving forward. So take, for example, the Urban Main program, which launched in Beatty's Ford. That is a core component of the work that we're doing with Truist, which is how we build district, small district, small business support organizations within each corridor. So now we're layering on the Truist grant. We're layering on a national partnership with Living Cities in addition to Main, Main Street, and we're pulling in new corridors. So we're in the building phase in Sugar Creek and West Boulevard. We'll be moving into the building phase quickly in Albemarle Road. So each one of these has a much larger story to it of how we're layering on those. I pulled out these top three just to give you some order of magnitude scale as to how that's happening. Alternatives to Violence is getting ready to launch in West Boulevard, and Nations Ford, Arrowhead. Staying in Place, you can see those neighborhoods there, one of our next steps. As that moves into implementation is to really look back and see, how's it working? How's it going? Should we be expanding to other corridors? Down below here, you'll see just programs that we are moving across in all six corridors, which are, again, can nestle up into those ones across the top. But also, when you hear about something like Hire Charlotte, or you hear about how we're doing small business support grants, please know that we are coordinated and collaborative on how that is specifically taking shape on the ground within each of our six corridors. So again, this is another way to show very similar information, but align it to those work streams. So you can see, take for example, a diverse and resilient economy work stream that has those multiple departments involved with it. These are the types of things within that work stream that the, that city staff is working on. So you'll see things like the public-private partnerships, our workforce development programs, any kind of opportunity for strategic acquisition like the West Boulevard and remount property, all of that sitting within that work stream. Same thing, you'll see where Staying in Place is nestled within Housing Access for All. Safe and Equitable Mobility, obviously, they have our transportation projects integrated in natural built environment. We're working really closely with Sarah and her team on some of the things that they've been doing, like the pole vault, like the, working with Duke on street lighting. We've been working very closely with them and how we can expand that program. Safe, Active, and Healthy Communities, that has our Safe Biz work in it, which is just getting off the ground. Corridors Connect, our community engagement piece. And then the Retain Culture and Identity, that includes placemaking projects within several corridors, kind of just getting off the ground, as well as a look at some of the other tools in our toolbox coming out with the UDO that we could potentially use to really further the retain culture and identity piece. So again, the work that we've been doing over the past 18 months, two years, really focuses on how we can get Sugar Creek and Albemarle into implementation and ready. So you will see, coming out of our shop, out of our team, this really close, co-created, collaborative environment with the community. So we just released the playbooks in the last spring, summer for Albemarle and Sugar Creek. And then to get to implementation, we took a fine-tooth comb at both of those and said, okay, if we have a list of, a wish list of 80 projects that are really important to the community, let's get that list into what we can do in the next one to three years with the funding that we have, which led us to what we call the roadmap, and it gives us a couple of things in each of those buckets that are high priority. So when you see projects coming out like Safe Biz in the Sugar Creek corridor, those are really those first strategic implementation projects from the roadmap that build, they really are, serve as the building blocks towards a full playbook, towards the full vision, right? So those documents we can share, they're available, but it's basically our work plan. So we have work plans now for Albemarle Road and for Sugar Creek as to how we're putting assets and resources out there. So looking forward into the next year, I just want to reiterate that we are continuing every day to build partnerships. We're focusing that implementation in Sugar Creek and Albemarle. We are prioritizing projects, obviously, in North Tryon, North Graham, and Wilkinson and Freedom. North Tryon and North Graham is about six months ahead of Wilkinson and Freedom, so we'll be there quickly once we hit the ground running in that corridor. A plug here, we have a community cleanup this Saturday in the Freedom Drive corridor, where we're partnering with Keep Charlotte Beautiful. We are doing that to start to build trust with that community and really start to get to know the people there, make sure that we are connected to the resources, so that's an early kickoff for that corridor. Again, building the, that really ties into that community engagement and communication effort. You're, you're about to see a lot more about Corridors. I'm sure you have in the media recently. And we'll continue to pivot again into that implementation, just while finalizing other things. So that wraps it up for me. I am, since the city manager is my, my closer, is that, was that the way it's supposed to go? Then I'll turn it over to him.
Now, you've, you've, you've got a couple of other folks that want to open, don't, don't go anywhere. I want to recognize Councilmember Graham, followed by Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to take this opportunity to first thank the, the staff and the management team for really hearing the council three years ago when we talked about the, the importance of investing in key quarters throughout the city. The city always had a, an initiative focus on quarters. This is really nothing new, right? The emphasis is already, has always been there, is just the, the money wasn't always there. And the, in, being very intentional about what we were doing was really not there at times. For the last four years, three years, it's really been there. So I want to thank the management team for hearing and, and listening. And it's true that when you put a, a spotlight on an issue and invest public dollars, private dollars will follow. And I think the Beatty's Ford Road is an example where literally we're tripping over ourselves because there are a number of private investors on the quarter, making significant investment on a wide variety of issues to really help and propel that quarter. And as your ED tier, I try to stay at 30,000 feet so I can see what's happening in all six quarters throughout the city. And certainly, there's been a lot of good work in council members, Wallington's District, and, and the, the work leading up to Albemarle and I-85. Obviously, we talked a little bit about that last week in terms of beginning to implement some strategies. All quarters are uniquely different. All quarters need different things. But certainly, I think the focus on re-establishing the team and this community focus is really important. Last, two more points. A lot of attention from the media, and I think WFAE has started a six-week profile each quarter. So I think that's started, or getting ready to start. I know I took them on a tour along Beatty's Ford Road and Albemarle because again, I'm looking at it not just what's in it for Malcolm, but what's in it for all of the quarters. And I think we're going to do some other stuff on Freedom as well. So I'll be out there in, in other areas of the city, but it's really talking about economic development focus for the community. And WBTV is going to do something, I think, with, next week on the quarters. And so I think it's really, really a powerful statement. A lot more work to be done, which leads me to my, my, my only question, and, and it's one that Ms. Dotson has been trying to help me understand for, for, for months now, so it's not her, it's probably me. But the private dollars, right? I mean, help me understand, how do we and can we begin to leverage the private dollars through the equity initiative? I'm just, I don't understand what's happening with that.
Do you want to take it?
Sure. So, Councilmember Graham, for the most part, the, you're exactly right. The public dollars came first, and then the private dollars are there. What is happening is there's a table where all of these folks are actually talking and seeing how they can be collaborative with the use of the, the private dollars to match the public dollars, as opposed to just doing various initiatives. So whether it's $20 million associated with Wells Fargo, or, you know, Fifth Third Bank, or United Way, or even the why, the concept is having these playbooks, these roadmaps, and being collaborative with how those dollars can help support what the city is doing.
So I'm, I'm a little impatient because it's been a while. So when will they be ready to identify how those dollars will be to utilize? And I mean, so I just don't understand when the right, when, when the right time is to disperse, and how individuals who may want access to it can, independent of what the city may be doing, and if the city's working on projects where we're getting ready to make an investment through our public lens and stretching that public lens as far as we can, and we need private dollars to kick in, when, how does that work? And when does it work?
Right. So, Councilmember Graham, and if I'm stepping out, pull me back, it's both. It's occurring through some of the grant-making from some of our partners, as well as opportunities to collaborate so that some projects aren't 100% funded by the city.
Yeah, I'll just note that we have.
Yeah, I'll just note that we have probably, so our Bank of America executive on loan has been actively meeting with people, having conversations. We have, to the city manager's point about the roundtable, we have those monthly to really try to make it very clear, the goals in the playbook, what the opportunities are, and how we can strategize altogether around those opportunities. But I understand.
Well, you'll have to give it to me today, but I would love to see an example of where that analogy I just laid out has happened, or in the process of happening, right? So I can feel comfortable saying that there's private investment through this initiative that's supporting these quarters.
I mean, I think the Truist Foundation work that was announced last week is a good example of that. I mean, it's an entry point, but I think it's a good example of that. We were going to do the work, their dollars are going to help stretch the work and help us get assistance in making sure we have equitable metrics to get the work done in a way that I think will be beneficial and could help to attract more dollars to the effort. We can get that, we can get more examples to you.
Thank you, and hopefully there's a, Ryan, that we got a good spot on the budget for it.
Okay. That was, I think I heard on a show, Anthony, the Secretary of State, was asked a question, and he just sat. And he sat, and they said, you're not going to answer the question. He said, no, I'm not. So with that, Ms. Ashmira.
This is a three-month process, right? I think I've got about three months to get it out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to echo what Councilmember Graham said. I think we've come a long way here with corridors of opportunities in past three, three to four years. Certainly, I've seen activity. One recent example that comes to mind is when, when Beyond Open grant by Wells Fargo, that was actually, over 60% was awarded to corridor, to businesses on corridors of opportunities. That's just one example. But what I really see, when we make, when we are doing capital investments in corridors of opportunities, our dollar is going much further because we are leveraging the private dollars, thanks to the mayor's Racial Equity Initiative and the work she had done, along with the foundation, to raise money. We are actually able to see more results. And I've also seen activities starting to occur with Albemarle and Central Corridor, and I know Councilmember Molina is very involved with that effort. And what I, with corridors of opportunity, it's not just economic development, right? I mean, this is really a very comprehensive approach that we have to take where we are tackling staying in place, we are tackling support for our small businesses, we are tackling crime through our ATV. And so it's truly a comprehensive model, and I think this is the one of its kind first that I have seen. And hopefully, this will serve as a model for other cities. But I continue to have received good feedback where crime has reduced, where we see more economic activity. So I'm certainly appreciative of that. And I see we have $10 million under capital for next three bond cycles. So certainly, I know this is gonna, even though it's $10 million of our public dollars, we are probably leveraging a lot more through the private sector. So kudos to city manager on this initiative. I'm very, very proud of it.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also, Monica, just echo exactly what Councilmember Graham and Ashmira said. I really have a vested interest in this program as two of the corridors are in District One, and I share a portion of Beatty's Fort with Councilmember Graham, a small portion. I also would like to say, I was at the Hidden Valley Neighborhood Association meeting on Tuesday, and it was great. I was there when we introduced the mobility hub and the microtransit program to the neighborhood, to the community. And it was high engagement, lots of questions about it. And coming back from the transportation summit for the state a couple of weeks ago, I'm very happy to see us leverage the microtransit innovation here in Charlotte relative to the other cities that have been doing it and that are doing it, that are larger than us, smaller than us. I think that's a great asset in our transit portfolio, transportation portfolio. So that is really great. The other question, the question that I had was around the Beyond Open grantees, that's in collaboration with Wells. I know that there's a high percentage that were, a high percentage of the grantees were along the corridors, but as I understand it, it was also very high percentage that were minority, and specifically, women-owned minority businesses. It might be helpful if we could get a breakdown by corridor of which, you know, how many grantees per corridor in this first phase, just so we'll be armed as district representatives with that information. And then I also know that the second wave is coming in just a couple of months in the beginning of the summer, so even more opportunity for corridor, small business owners to participate in that program. So that's an excellent public-private partnership with Wells.
Yes, we can get you the exact numbers, but you are correct. There are very high percentages of businesses of color, women, and corridor geographies. So we can get you the exact breakdown. I have it in my email, so I can make sure and get that to y'all.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Molina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also, just echoing the sentiment, I really, I am very excited about the corridors project. I think it's an excellent opportunity to give some focus to, you know, the parts of the city that need it most. And so I think we all kind of feel that way. I'm wondering, and I've always wondered about the process, you know, as we continue to monitor and control this program, I don't know at what key milestones you'll have to kind of look at what works, what are best practices like. So I'm interested in, especially as we move into the Albemarle Road corridor, what are we learning from the projects that are further along on the baseline? And how are we using that information to then inform, you know, the future projects? So like, for an example, in my mind, what I continue to see is some of the things that we've talked about around the table. As we continue to invest in these infrastructure projects on these corridors, we also have this parallel item that is, in some cases, displacement, in some cases, some of the, you know, less sexy things that we like to talk about. So I'm interested in how are we going to kind of parallel and work to mitigate some of those risks for our community members as we, you know, because this is an amazing opportunity. But then on any project baseline, you're, you know, and especially this one, it's brand new. We really are discovering as we develop the program. So I'm interested in knowing, like, have you guys actually taken a look at, you know, taken a look at that?
Yeah, so we actually are just now formulating a refresh on what success looks like that I think we'll be ready. So we have-
That was my next question.
Yeah, one of our, one of our, one staff person right now is, that is, her special project is to really looking at those metrics and getting a good handle on how we want to measure things, what's the time period, what are we really, what is the goal in doing that? What is the information that, what can we learn from it? What information is useful for that? So I think in the next three months or so, we'll have a really, some recommendations around how we do that and what that looks like, because we have heard that. There are a lot of other kind of dashboard metric things going on, and so we're trying to get a good grasp of all those and how we can apply those concepts, ideas, data to corridors and point in time of when we want to start doing it. So it's a great question, and we're getting there, because there's a lot of data out there. We're trying to be conscientious about what are we measuring and what is it telling us? So that we are kind of getting at the heart of what you were just saying, that it's not, you know, we're not just measuring homeownership, because that could be an indicator of displacement, right? You know, so we want, we really want to be thoughtful around what data we have, how we might use it in corridors, and the purpose of how we're measuring it and how we're relaying that information.
I'm very happy to hear that, because, you know, even around the excitement, that's one of those things that's kind of been ringing in the back, like, you know, what does success look like, right? Like, if you're building out a model and, you know, as you develop the plan, then I'm wondering, what does success look like? So I hadn't seen any metrics around that, but I'm, you know, very eager to kind of see that, even, you know, have some input if I'm able to, you know, delve in. I'm here.
Yes, no, that sounds great. Yeah, a leading on opportunity just released, a dashboard too. So we're, again, we're trying to figure out what all is out there, and what are other people measuring and looking at, and then how does that inform what we do and be thoughtful around it? So I appreciate that. All right, thanks. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anything else?
I think that it, Mayor, Council, one thing I'd like to, you know, is lift up, you know, Monica, and also Tiffany, it's great to see, you know, other folks in the organization be able to present in front of council. You always see the ACMs and department directors, so just want you to know that the bench is really deep, and we have a really talented group of folks. So I just wanted to end on that note.
Thank you. I want to ask and make sure we've had a good discussion, lots of presentations going around the room. Is there anyone that has a question? Because Ryan's team is going to put, answer these questions. If you've had something that you wanted to be addressed on the capital program, as well as anything in today's, anything from you, Ms. Ashmira? Anything to add?
My questions were addressed.
Okay. Ms. Molina?
Oh, ma'am, Madam Mayor, I'm good.
Madam Mayor, so Ryan, on the at-risk list you're going to give us, can you put the dollar amount beside the projects? I think in here, it just says at-risk in the quarter, but I would like to see the dollar amount.
Yeah, we'll give you the budget for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Mayor Protan?
I think, I don't know if it's for between now and next budget meeting, but as it relates to Vision Zero, how are we kind of benchmarking our achievements there and what relates to Vision Zero? For instance, the two intersection and road projects, they help us achieve Vision Zero goals, but it's a bit different than we spent in the last bond cycle because of the different financial situations that we were in. So it might just be helpful to compare apples to apples as we move forward.
All right. Mr. Driggs, anything, any further question? Mr. Graham?
I'm good.
Okay, I have one. On the CIP, if you took out all of the transportation projects, what would be the amount that was just left that we would have to fund? And would it be possible to give us an idea of what those are? I think that we've always had the two combined. I like to see transportation projects separately included and with a total amount offsetting the general municipal functions that we have. Okay? All right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? We do, all in favor? Aye. Let's get out of this place.